So we can get started and it's nice to see you. Happy February. And yeah, is there any adjustments to the agenda that anybody wants to make? It's a big no from Clayton. Okay, then we will move on for public comment. Anybody from the public? Or anybody else want to make any public comment? Also, a big no from Clayton.
Yep, there's nobody in the boardroom but me.
Okay. I don't see anybody online. Okay. Well, then we will keep going. Excuse me. So we are up to the consent agenda, which included the January 21st minutes and the check register. Does anybody want to move to approve? Or make any comments or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks Andrea.
I'll second.
Thanks, Tasha. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, we are moving right along. So the next bit on our agenda is a conversation and hopefully approval of public meetings for our Montpelier service program, which is described in our packet pages 13 to 16. And Clayton, are you kicking this off?
I'm gonna punt it right over to Chris.
All right, Chris.
And I'm gonna punt it to Monica.
All right, look, look at us. We're are we, are we playing, are we playing American football, playing soccer, playing rugby? Like, what are we doing with all this punting? And it's a little early, but a little early for sports, but we'll, we'll go with that. So good morning, everyone. I'm going to try to share my screen and let's see. See if this will do the trick. All right, can you all see?
Yes.
All right, so let's see if I can do both of these things here. So I'm gonna start it off and then Chris will, will jump in. So recognizing we don't have a ton of time on the agenda, I'm gonna try to breathe, we're gonna try to breeze through it really quickly, but by all means, if there are questions or conversation points, we can, we can stop through as we go through. Let's see, so the goal of this initiative that we're working to, that we'll be working to do is to serve the Greater Montpelier area into Berlin more efficiently while eliminating duplication of service. So just to level set for current, the current state, the city of Montpelier, much of the city of Montpelier and over the line into Berlin is served by MyRide, which was Vermont's first microtransit pilot. And presently operates Monday through Saturday, seven to six, Monday through Friday, eight to six on Saturdays. And we worked with our technology vendor, VIA, to revision options for Montpelier service that will optimize efficiency and improve service delivery is the goal. So again, to level set, this is the current state of the services in the central Vermont area serving Montpelier in Berlin. So MyRide is the purple zone that you see. And then I'm not gonna go through all of this, but these are all of our fixed route services that kind of go in through and around, around the zone that you're probably, you likely from a, excuse me, familiar with those. So from a funding perspective, just to orient to what the landscape looks like there, the city of Montpelier historically had contributed a higher amount for MyRide service. And that's about forty thousand, forty-ish thousand dollars. For the current fiscal year, the city had reduced their budget by that amount. So they had zeroed out the increased amount that they had contributed toward MyRide service. Their, their 26 budget, which is still not finalized or approved, but that currently contemplates the same level of service, same level of contribution rather at thirty thousand, which is the reduction of the about forty-ish thousand previously. The town of Berlin similarly has not contributed toward GMT service for the current state fiscal year. Previously, they had contributed a little over eleven thousand. And VTrans presently covers the 20% match requirement for MyRide. And we heard from them that this fund source was going to be significantly decreased for the upcoming state fiscal year and had directed us to investigate other options for serving the Greater Montpelier area. So so then that brings us to, and I will punt it over to you, Chris, you wanna just give me a nudge when, when you want me to switch the slides?
Yep, that sounds good. Thank you. So I'm gonna go over a little bit of the data that we looked at via some of the data that we have just with the system. And so, you know, one of the, one of the nice things around microtransit and the fact that it is a technology-based system is all of that information and data that's available to help inform service planning processes like this. So on the right-hand side, you'll see a map of all of the major people are traveling between in the current MyRide zone, not surprisingly, the transit center, and then many, many medical and shopping locations in the southern part of the zone bubble up to the top of where folks are traveling between. On one of the scenario slides later on, it will, you know, really show sort of how these travel patterns can be connected through a mixture of service delivery types. When MyRide was launched in 2021, the service was made up of the service hours of the three former fixed routes that operated in the zone. So that was the, the Montpelier Hospital Hill, the Montpelier Circulator, and then the Capital Shuttle, which were, which ran during the legislative session. And so the hours for this route, for this capital shuttle were annualized at the time to give us about a budgeted total of about 10,000 annual service hours. Unfortunately, the last sort of full fiscal year staffing, as folks know, has impacted our ability to deliver the full service in both fixed route and microtransit service. Next slide, please. So the graph here is just showing our month-over-month ridership on MyRide with the orange line representing our monthly boardings per revenue hour. So as you'll see here, we've leveled out at approximately that sort of 3,000 boardings per month, but with our peak in early 2023. Many of these increases, such as that one in early 2023, are points at which we were fully staffed for that service and having that supply really helped move that many more people. Next slide, please. So I apologize, these are a little small, but the tap graph here shows similar information to what was on the previous slide, but showcases all the requests that come in. So outside of staffing, the biggest impacts to our service delivery in MyRide and ridership potential are the cancellations and no-shows on the service, as many of those times a driver has already been dedicated to those rides. You know, within those cancellations, about 30% of folks cancel with at least 48 hours notice, which is great, so other folks can, can book trips. But we saw through the data, as we looked at it, that 40% of folks late cancel, which means that they're canceling within less than three hours of their scheduled ride. These cancellations, the greatest impact from these cancellations, really disproportionate impact those who utilize the service for the shorter inter, inter-Montpelier trips. And so the graph on the bottom is showing all the requests that come in and how many we have been able to at least offer a trip to, whether through the app or through the call center. For the most part, we have been able to hover at about a 95%, what's called met demand rate. We had some of those dips where you can see greater portions of red correlating to some of those staffing challenges. You know, it's really great that we can see all these trip requests and we're able to, that we're able to make of the service, but just wanted to note that it is sort of hard to compare to fix route, as it's hard to pinpoint when a fixed route schedule may not, you know, work exactly for folks that utilize the service. Next slide, please. So back in 2022, about a year and a half into the service, we worked with Steve Fabel to do a comprehensive review of the MyRide system, where he spoke with operators, management, community partners, VIA and others, to see where adjustments could be made in the Montpelier MyRide service. So the list here on the screen were things that were recommended, some of which we have worked on since then, such as acquiring the Dodge Pro Masters for the service, the smart vehicles and that we're using now instead of the cutaways, and then some that were used to help plan out the scenarios that Monica will talk about later on. Next slide. So when we were working with VIA on the analysis and thinking about, you know, the potential scenarios, one of the things that was gonna impact those, those scenarios was, you know, changing to a fixed route and how the share of ridership would break out among these different service model types. So in one where if we reduce the microtransit area to mostly Montpelier with a couple areas in Berlin, such as the GMT office and the Amtrak facility, we could expect to see about 38% of our current riders using that service. Knowing that a core element of all of the service adjustment is bringing back some level of fixed route service in a form of a reinstated Montpelier Hospital Hill, that accounts for about 42% of our current riders on the MyRide service, if you account for the deviation zone. And then finally, the, the biggest curve ball really is the remaining 20% of folks who either start or end their journey in a potential reduced MyRide zone, but are outside of walking zone to propose Montpelier Hospital Hill. So these are folks that most likely would be using MyRide to get to the Montpelier Hospital Hill or the city commuter route, I mean, needing to transfer to get to their final destination, whereas now they might just use the MyRide service to do that trip. Next slide, please. So with that, all three scenarios that Monica will cover in a sec, they all include some form of a revised Montpelier Hospital Hill from what it looked like pre-MYRide. With the data that we have on where folks are traveling as well, as well as Steve's analysis from earlier, there were a couple of key points when designing the new route. And again, this is, you know, this is still subject to change. So, but one thing is, we really wanted to connect areas where we've heard over the years from folks who would really prefer a fixed route. This includes key affordable housing locations, such as the Pioneer Apartments and Prospect Street Apartments in Montpelier. In the previous Hospital Hill route, the Granger Road area, which was only accessible by deviation request for Montpelier, and where a number of medical offices and industry buildings and the Brown Health and Rehab Facility are located. You know, with the data, we do see many folks are using the MyRide service to access these locations, and we wanted to make it easier to access these locations by including it on the fixed route path for this new Montpelier Hospital Hill. And then finally, the other place that is different from the previous routing is that we're planning on serving the Central Vermont Medical Center twice. So once as the first stop when folks are coming up the hill, and then again, as the last stop before folks are heading down the hill, recognizing that, you know, many folks who are traveling between Montpelier and the hospital, this second trip will help reduce the time that folks are onboard, having to wait as it circulates or the Hospital Hill area by about 15 minutes. Next slide. And then just trying to recap some of that, you know, as I mentioned, we, we heard from a lot of folks in the past about really returning to some form of fixed route, returning to the Montpelier Hospital Hill, and really trying to meet that need. You know, also, as we look at these different service scenarios, we're really trying to limit the duplication of service as best as possible. And when looking at all the data with, with VIA and looking at all the current trip requests in the current MyRide, pretty much every trip can be accommodated if we do switch to a, a fixed route Hospital Hill and a potential smaller MyRide microtransit. Now I'll hand it over to Monica to go over the three scenarios that were provided in the board packet.
Great, thanks, Chris. So the three scenarios that we would contemplate putting forward for public comment include, include the following. So scenario one is return to two fixed routes. So this would eliminate microtransit altogether. It would bring back the revised Montpelier Hospital Hill that Chris just provided an overview of, and also bring back the Montpelier Circulator as, as an option. So it would be only fixed route service serving the Montpelier and into Berlin area, and also keeping the city commuter as is. Scenario two would be the return of Montpelier Hospital Hill and reducing the MyRide zone. And so this is the, the data points, kind of the hotspots on the screen that you see here is directly from the VIA analysis for what, where the current pickups and drop-off locations are. So this would be one of the, one of the options. And then scenario three, which was also on the, on the list for per VTrans request, is what if we just brought back Montpelier Hospital Hill and then by default served the rest of the Montpelier area via demand response for people who receive non-emergency Medicaid transportation, older and disabled services, et cetera. So just the, the only buses into and out of Montpelier would be Montpelier Hospital Hill and city commuter for fixed route as one of the three options for public comment. So with that, the next steps would be the public comment period itself, starting in March or starting, occurring during the month of March. And then from that, evaluating the costs for all three of the options, including an analysis of demand response impacts. So if we were to do the scenario three, for example, what would the increased demand on our demand response, which is heavily done by, by volunteers? And, you know, what, what would that demand, the impact of that demand be? And then also consulting with VTrans for their perspective, engaging with the municipalities that are impacted directly, looking for board approval for where we land after those steps have been taken place in April, and then working for over the next subsequent months for implementation of where we land over the summer, ideally for July 1st. Did I miss anything in that, Chris?
No.
Okay, all right. So I think I'm gonna stop sharing because those are all we have for slides, so we can get back to the conversation. So am I not sharing anymore?
You're good.
Okay, cool.
All right, any questions that people want to start with now? Go ahead, Christian.
Thank you. Quick question, just in term, you, you spoke of the budget constraints we're facing in terms of local match. Do any of these scenarios better fit those requirements? I'm just trying to batch the our, our fixed constraints versus the needs to revise service.
Yeah, so that, that's a great question. I think, you know, one of the things, at least in the central Vermont service area, that is just kind of needs to be stated is that the municipality contributions for all towns have largely remained flat for the past, you know, 15 years or thereabouts. And there is not with any of the towns that we serve, a one-to-one correlation of this is the amount of service your municipality receives, and this is the, you know, 20, this is the local share for that town. It's just the, the formula is, is candidly due for, due for an update. And so, but all of that to say is, there's not really a one-to-one relationship with any of the municipalities we serve for, this is the local match for the service, level of service that's provided. That being said, we have not received an exact target from VTrans for what the local share is that we should be looking for, for this particular book of business and service, although I do see, at least I thought I saw, a couple of VTrans representatives on the call. I thought I saw Dan and Ross, but
Yep, there you go.
There they are. So I guess I would, might ask either of them to, to jump in if there's anything they want to put on, if, if there's any further refinement based on the status of the budget, the governor's but recommended budget in the state house at this point.
Sure, if it's okay. So what VTrans is doing is looking at all the microtransit pilots. Four years ago, we received a one-time $500,000 T-fund increase in state dollars for supporting these microtransit pilots. And to the extent possible, we've made those 20% match on those federal dollars, 80% federal dollars for these pilots, and those funds are expended throughout this year. We'll, we'll be adding about $100,000 this year to make good on those commitments. But those match dollars are gone, starting in '26. And we look at our state dollars, there was a few hundred thousand dollar increase, but not a $500,000 increase in state dollars. When we looked at, and we'll be looking at the Route Performance Report in a few minutes here, or an hour, and we'll take a look and talk a little bit more. But for Montpelier, we have a lot of coworkers who rely on transit, you know, true believers here, and this is the longest standing pilot. It's also the pilot that, you know, wasn't able to maintain the level of operations that we had planned. And so the rider experience certainly wasn't what we had hoped. The ridership increases that salespeople from the software companies tell us about really hasn't materialized. And we also have a bunch of parking now for the legislature. And so with those dynamics in place, we asked GMT to just reconsider the Montpelier microtransit and to consider not reverting only to one route, but maybe reverting to the original routes before the pilot that were performing very well. We had a local group and a new mode, all kind of looking toward judging and piloting what it could be. And at this time, we thought, well, if we went back to the microtransit or the Montpelier Circulator and the Hospital Hill, we wouldn't need that seasonal route connecting Department of Labor to the legislature. So that could save us a little bit of money. And we'd also be returning to those fixed route services that, again, what we're doing pretty well. So until we see the cost, we won't have any further acknowledgement, other than the important one, which is we very much appreciate Chris and Monica and the communities taking a look at this with all these scenarios in place. So we're right on schedule and we'll see what those applications coming out in April reveal in terms of what we need to match all of the routes, just not Montpelier as, you know, in its, on its own.
Thank you, Ross, for fleshing that out a bit.
Sure.
And if I could have a quick follow-up, Amy. How, how many public meetings are you expecting for this process? And I know it's throughout the month of March, but just long make sure I'm able to participate in those.
Chris, can you, can I phone a friend on, on that one for our public input process?
Yeah, so we, we haven't scheduled any of them yet, Christian, but, you know, I imagine multiple, you're just given the, the wide berth of the service area, definitely in Montpelier and probably somewhere up in Berlin as well.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, so at this time, we are not, go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, so what was the reason for the significant drop in local match from Montpelier and Berlin?
So I was not with GMT when those decisions were made by those municipalities in the, in the past. I guess I would defer to, I know, like Jamie, I think you were soliciting or working with the municipalities on the contributions at that point, if you want to.
Yeah.
If you're able to provide that context, that would be great.
The Berlin issue was an unfortunate clerical issue on their end, where they lost our funding request for the fiscal year. And per their policy, in order to regain those funds, we would have to go out and petition. And then Montpelier was making their own budget cuts, and they were, I think they took that 40,000-plus dollars and they used that to hire a new position in their fire department or their police department. And so they had contacted us about that reduction.
Thank you.
I'm really struggling because it seems like we're creating service. And I apologize if I'm not, if I'm not getting this as quickly as others, but that we're looking at creating service without having a really clear sense of what the budget should be for any new service or revised service that we're providing. Is that, is that correct? Because we negotiate the local match with the municipalities and we're kind of unclear what the state is able to provide. Is that right?
I mean, I, I think those are the, the unknowns at this point, Susan. I think that is an inaccurate assessment. That I think there's, there's multiple, the, the air, the city of Montpelier will require some, some level of service. And I think the, the kind of the multiple different options and then the resulting, you know, cost of those options will be under discussions with VTrans for kind of, as Ross mentioned, what their kind of larger budget picture entails. And I don't know if that's, if there's a more, if you, if there's a finer point to put on that that anyone wants to articulate.
So one thing we do have is, because we've been writing, running the microtransit program for a while now, we have real experience in the area. And so that will help in any estimation of what the costs, costs of the three scenarios are, I assume.
Right, and yes, that's correct. And, and the analysis that, that VIA, our vendor, did was really enormously helpful in, in pinpointing what that demand is. So not just the, 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 the demand met and unmet, to inform kind of, you know, what, what the ultimate costs would be with all of the variables for all, all three of the scenarios.
Okay, thank you.
I think Chapin wants to weigh in on some historical perspective here, since he's been around.
If I may, as a member of the public, I, I just wanted to share that as I look at this, one of the lenses is the result of the analysis, wonderful analysis that's done about two years ago, was that there's a certain community served by fixed route and another different community served by microtransit. And if you did a Venn diagram, there's a lot of overlap, but there are people who lose out if you have just one or just the other, because deviations don't handle last mile as well as, as microtransit does. And so it turns out that the best is to have some combination where, and so as I'm looking at this, I'm just thinking, you know, what's the choice that's not either or? So I just wanted to share that perspective, that we, we know from data that we've collected that we lose some people if we do one or the other, and they're somewhat different populations. And if we, a combination is always stronger than one or the other. Thanks.
I appreciate that. Fortunately, at this moment in time, we are just looking for approval to go forward with public comment to get the public's input on that. And Susan, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, this might not be appropriate for right now, but I was curious about Ross's comment about new parking that's been made available for legislators. And I could talk to him offline about that, but I'm curious about what that is and if that's been a factor in driving folks away from transit. I'd just be curious to learn more about that.
Okay. Can you do a 10-second answer, Ross? Yeah?
Yeah, because of all the parking that the employees aren't using because we're working from home so often, just those people visiting the state house and those legislators who without a parking space, which is not many, now are, can park in easy walking distance to the state house. In the past, that wasn't the case, and we would put together just a seasonal service when legislature, when the legislature was in session to run an extra bus from the Department of Labor. And that was pretty costly and low effective and, and those things. So it's nice to have the parking downtown to otherwise provide, you know, access to the state house.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so at this time, we are looking for a motion to move forward with public comment and engagement so that we can get a sense of what folks in the community need.
Can you make that motion, that we move forward with public?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mike and Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed?
Love you.
Love you too. Any abstentions? All right, so we will move forward with public comment in March and we'll see this topic again. Thank you all.
Yes.
Next on our agenda, we are moving forward with delegation of authority to approve the planning RFP. Chris, is that you? No?
It's Matt.
Ah, Matt, I'll get it right sometime. All right, Matt.
Start including who's presenting on the agenda. My apologies.
No, it's, it's more fun this way.
So, good morning. There's a memo in the board packet outlining the procurement process. Good morning. There's a memo in the board packet outlining the procurement process, where we are and our recommendations for next steps. I'm not sure it's necessary for me to share the memo, but if anybody would like me to pull it up, I'm happy to. But we received, so proposals were due on February 10th for this procurement. We received five proposals from AECOM, LSC Transportation Consultants, Stedman Hill Consulting, Nelson Nygaard and Tool Design. Evaluations are still ongoing, but we performed preliminary review of just the required proposal contents and the required certifications from our contract provisions and found that all five proposers had addressed all the required areas of the proposals. So we do have complete proposals. As, and many of these firms have demonstrated significant transit experience. Several of these are on active task order contracts with the state of Vermont. So due to the timing of the proposal or due to the timing of the procurement, to give ourselves sufficient time to do a thorough evaluation, we are requesting that the board delegate approval or delegate authority to the board chair and treasurer to approve the award recommendations that will come from staff on behalf of the full board. We're targeting an award by the end of this month, February 28th. And so this, this process will give us time to do a thorough evaluation as well as leaving some room for discussions or interviews if those, if we do deem those to be necessary. So this is giving us that opportunity without needing to prolong the process to the March board meeting. As noted in the, in the memo, we are considering issue, issuing awards to one or more proposer as outlined up there. And then we put in the memo that no single award would exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. Just with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions from the board.
Susan?
Could combined awards exceed that amount annually? With multiple consultants?
We could. I think one of the benefits to that approach is that if we have additional funding from other sources, that gives us the ability to, to utilize those fully. We also don't necessarily know going into a given year whether one particular vendor is going to complete the full scope of services for our planning needs. Whereas another, in another year, there may be a combination. So I think we would seek to right-size the the annual terms of each contract, should we, should we award multiple contracts. But I think that I think that multiple, I, I think that combined awards could exceed that hundred and twenty-five thousand figure as that would give us ultimately more flexibility with the funding. But I'm also open to the board's preference there.
And so what's the reason for the limit?
It matches the amount of funding that we traditionally receive for planning projects in a given year. We typically receive a hundred thousand for external costs through our CCRPC GRIP as well as roughly twenty-five thousand of planning, plant rural planning funds through the state of Vermont. I will note that there are capital planning is one of the, capital project planning is one of the items in the scope. So we could conceivably have some capital funding for studies and other items that could be paid for out of capital.
But the reason that you want the multiple option for the multiple vendors is in case other funding emerges that can be used for this purpose, is there, does it make sense just to lift that requirement?
Unfortunately, we do need to have a ceiling per FTA requirements. So we do have to have some number there and I don't want it to be too low where we're, we're hamstringing ourselves from doing projects in a given year. That, that's kind of why I just put in the hundred and twenty-five, no award would exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand annually and didn't really get into specifics on how that would be carved up if it would, if we did awards to more than one vendor.
Okay, thanks.
Matt, would there be anything that would prevent the board from revisiting that ceiling during the, during the contract? If there was a unique situation where we wanted to do more?
I don't believe so. This, this has been discussed with our A and E contract, even though we aren't near the ceiling, but after we did award that, I was a little concerned that I had set the ceiling a bit too low. It would be, you know, raising the ceiling would be a procurement action. So there are requirements that we would need to follow, but I think as long as we, our reasoning is sound and we're not using that as a way of getting around any FTA procurement requirements, then that would be possible.
Chapin?
Great, thanks, Matt. So in essence, with this ceiling, we have an on, we're basically have an on-call contracts and we can use from these contractors as needed up to this budgeted amount. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
I'm fully supportive. Thanks.
Really appreciate that rewording that fit with my brain. So thank you. Any other conversations? Thoughts, questions? Well, then I, yep, Tasha.
I lost track of my button. I, I guess my question is, am I confused about this? Or it, it sounds like we've kind of got to a place where we might have gotten if we had done a request for qualifications instead. Is that?
I get, I suppose that is a, another form of procurement that we could have done for this. We found that the request for proposal format is we, we've had success using requests for proposals for this type of procurement. And I, I didn't really see any reason to deviate from that. And you do have that possibility for multiple awards in that scenario. Proposal, you know, the, the evaluation criteria is largely qualifications based. The proposals all have their, the qualifications of each vendor well detailed. So I think it's, I, I think it's just a matter of approach there.
Right, right. Because it's kind of the same outcome where you do request for, you know, qualifications and then you can pick among a variety of vendors for any particular thing. Okay, thanks, Matt.
All right. There aren't any other comments or questions we could move to? I'm looking for, entertain a proposal to give Paul and myself the ability to approve the proposed. That was worded poorly. Thankfully, we have some ideas sent ahead that I'm not currently looking at. Susan, were you going to make a motion?
I was just gonna say that, yeah, I would make that motion, but I can pull up the.
The memo does have the requested wording in bold on the. I don't have the pack, I just have the memo in front of me. I don't have the packet to tell you what page that is, unfortunately.
It is on page 18. I am now looking at it. Susan, are you as well?
I am looking at it.
Okay.
So I move that we delegate authority to the board chair and treasurer to approve award recommendations from staff on behalf of the full board.
Thank you. Again, thanks, Chapin. Any further conversations, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pulling my agenda back up. So we are moving on to conversation about recommended reductions for June of 2025. And I'm going to guess Clayton.
And thank you, everyone. I'm going to be turning this over to Chris momentarily. And I just want to remind folks sort of of the process that we're, that we've laid out here. And that is that we will be giving you this staff recommendation at this meeting, answering your questions, getting your feedback on what information you would like us to gather before the next meeting so that at our meeting in March will be the meeting that we actually end up approving reductions. And so no decisions today. Just think about when you're hearing from Chris, what information you would like for us to have on hand and to provide to you so that you could be comfortable making a decision next month. And so Chris, I'm going to turn it over to you to walk us through where we are going to recommend reducing service. And I do want to acknowledge appreciation for Ross and the folks at V-Trans with their work on the FY26 budget so that these reductions are in the five hundred thousand dollar range as opposed to the 1.2 million dollar range. And, and I also just want to mention that with the reductions being in this lower range, that's why we sort of deviated from the idea that we would be presenting a waterfall list. And because I think that with this, with the smaller amounts, that these are the these are the reductions that I think makes the most sense to staff. And, and so, and so it won't be, you know, a much longer list as we had originally proposed. Thankfully, because we're not having to cut so much. So sorry for stumbling on my words there and I'm going to turn it over to Chris and drink more coffee.
Excellent. Thank you. So yeah, certainly the, the five hundred thousand dollar number makes this a little bit easier. Still obviously not great, you know, looking at service directions. But, you know, we did present the following options, the following list to the leadership committee last week. And so one of the things on, on the list for June is the summer schedule that we've talked about. So what this would include is on our core four routes, so the, the Williston Essex, Shelburne and North Ave, so that these, these would all move to a thirty minute headway on the service during the eight weeks in the summertime. This is when we see the greatest ridership decreases just with folks away in college, you know, away from school, folks on vacation and other stuff. So this, this was really the, the best way to sort of match where demand and ridership are. And so again, that's only would be for the, the eight week schedule that goes from sort of mid-June to the end of August for that. The other adjustment is.
If I could interrupt momentarily, Chris?
Yep.
One of the things that I wanted to raise to the board's attention is that sort of similar to the Saturday reductions that we did in December, where we thought the cost savings would have, you know, a, a bigger impact because of all the overtime that's used on Saturday. With summers being when a majority of our staff are trying to take their vacations, we actually use a ton of overtime in the summer. And by this reduced schedule will significantly reduce the amount of overtime necessary.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes, that was, that's another key point there. The other is, the other service change is on Sundays. As we noted, making some adjustments on Sunday service. So this is the concept that I talked about back in January where we'd look to combine the city loop and the North Ave route to make a north end circulator that runs every ninety minutes and then a south end circulator that is the combination of the Pine Street and the sort of short number six to market thirty-two to create that south end circuit also running every ninety minutes. And then in addition on Sundays, we'd look to cut the number eleven completely. A majority of the ridership on the number eleven on Sundays is where the number one already provides service to folks within easy walking distance for that. And so essentially on Sundays, starting in June, the recommendation would be to have the, the Williston Essex route as they currently operate every thirty minutes. And then these two circulator routes as well. The other adjustment on weekdays is on the city loop. So this, currently the city loop operates every thirty minutes. And so this would be adjusting the headways to every sixty minutes on this particular route where we'd combine service to Fernhill and Macaulay Square so that both are still have access to that route and just moving at that every sixty minutes. Again, as I talked about in January, this is where a majority of folks for this route are within walking distance to all of our other sort of routes within downtown Burlington and can also get service there. And then finally, this is the one that we didn't talk about at, at the January meeting is the, the Williston Essex route. And so as I hear about later on during the root performance report presentation, the number ten has been deemed underperforming. This is the ninth year in a row that that route has, has been deemed underperforming. And, and so we're really looking at trying to again, match where riders are traveling along this route. And so one way that we're looking at making this adjustment on that route is by going back to the old number four and sort of that Essex circulator route that operated with a few trips in the morning and a few trips in the evening. One of the things that we looked at is the current ridership on the ten. Seventy percent of that, of the boardings and the lightings on that route happen in the Essex Town Essex Junction area with the remaining thirty percent happening for travel between Williston and Essex on there. And so that's the other piece that we'll be bringing to the board for the June meeting. Those are all the things that will be, you know, bringing for approval at next month's board meeting for June. And just so folks know, looking further, further down, there are other service adjustments that we'd be looking at in FY26, some of which, all of which, excuse me, we've talked about at previous meetings. So this is re-envisioning service for the South Burlington City Center. The utilizing the number nine Muskeve route to go to the Shaws in Colchester. And then I'm trying to figure out a way to extend the number two Essex route to the Essex Experience in Essex Town. So happy to answer any questions if there's folks, if there's information that folks want as well for next month's board meeting. Happy to provide that. And then one other thing that I'll also note too is between now and the next board meeting, we will be working with Steve Albo to do a comprehensive stick factor analysis on the service changes that the board has already approved as well as the, the stuff that we're getting approval for, for June. And then he'll also be looking at ideas or some of the ideas that we're looking at for further down in FY26 just so that the board has that as well as an additional piece of information.
Thank you. Questions? And I, I just want to acknowledge that with this change, Williston loses a whole lot of opportunity for service. And Clayton has offered to meet with the town manager and myself and Charlene to really have that conversation. But if folks have that question, we, we do acknowledge that that's a challenge. Go ahead, Raj.
Hi, thanks. Sorry to be on camera, off camera, excuse me. A few questions. My counsel wanted me to ask specifically what GMT does actively, to actively promote ridership. And this is specifically coming around the concept of the number ten being underperforming as we've seen it cut and cut in terms of frequency. So there, we're curious, I guess, what kind of marketing, what kind of business outreach, what kind of, what in general? And I, and that's kind of what I'd love to know, not this minute, but if I could, if we could get that information. There are, you know, as we all know, there's just a ton of employers in this area we're talking about for the, for the ten. And so we're really curious as we talk about more reductions or, or cutting out Williston on this, what active work is done? And I guess the other, around the thirty minute summer, is this the, which Essex route is this that you were talking about for the?
The number two. So just during the summertime.
Okay. And how would that mesh with, for instance, the hospital shift changes? This has come up for us before in terms of previous cuts of having especially evening employees waiting forty-five minutes or longer because the service slowed down right before the shift change. So I'm curious about how much interaction has been, how much conversation with UVM Health and UVM around the impacts of that for their employees?
Yeah, so one thing, since I think the, the January meeting, we, we have been in contact with UVM Medical Center. And so we do have a lot of information from then, them on where UVM MC employees live and what shift times and all the information. So that, that's certainly going into this conversation.
So that, that seven o'clock evening shift has been thought of in terms of that delay and how that's going to work because that is still, you know, summer or not. I believe it currently is that, you know, I believe it currently is that, you know, if they don't make it right at a couple of minutes after seven, they're waiting quite a long time.
Yeah, so there's. There's a couple of pieces, so there's the sort of broader, you know, what service changes that the board is approving. And then from there, we go through our scheduling process to really work within those parameters and make those times work as best as possible for for where folks are trying to travel across the entire region.
Great, okay.
Then I'm going to let Jamie answer the marketing piece, but I want to add two things that if you are on social media, you'll see that there's a nice campaign going on about rider voices. And their experiences, and I encourage you, if you are on social media, to find those and share those out. Because that's part of what we can do to kind of amplify that. I also want to add that we had this really great, I think she was in AmeriCorps. Who was out there training folks to use the bus and several of that, or at least one of those was in the the Brownell Library in Essex. And it was really cool. So I'll be quiet now, Jamie.
It's okay. Thank you, Amy. And that campaign is in print, and in the coming weeks, we'll we'll be expanding where those. Ads will be running, including Milton, St. Albans, and Essex Reporter is going to start running those ads as well. As for marketing, we do general marketing, but we have lots of business relationships in the Essex corridor. So we work with the school district, Carrick Green Mountain, Global Foundries, Chapin has his hand raised. So I think he'll probably talk about when we tried to work with some of the developers along two A to work with. With them to get passes and hands of their residents. We weren't super successful in that initiative. At the time, there wasn't a TDM. You know, obligation for developers, and there isn't still in that corridor. But we've done lots of sort of individualized work. We tried to get the Essex Experience on board with some business and employee type transportation. We worked with the the Williston community to kind of, you know, see which folks were going out toward Essex on two A. So we've tried lots of initiatives in the past. And I'll I'll pause because I'm sure Chapin wants to sort of weigh in on the the developer piece of that.
If you're handing it to me, and I I thank you for allowing a member of the public to say something at this point. I just wanted, I don't want to go into the reasons why I'm going to fight for the number ten that they've been stated before. I just wanted to say that one of the pieces of information I think it'd be good to bring to the board in March is. How would the changes that are proposed affect assessments? Because especially in Williston's case, there's been no change to the assessment. You know, there's been the increases every year, but no change as service has been lowered all the way back to the one B, the village one being dropped. And so I just don't want the the economics to ignore the fact that we would probably have to. Reduce assessments for Sundays towns. Thank you.
Thanks. And then Clayton and then Mike.
And so two things, I'll answer Chapin's question about assessments. One of the things that the governance and the finance committee has been chewing on is how to modify the assessments. Based on the service reductions that will happen after we've, you know, issued the assessments for the year. And so my expectation is is that there would be some type of true up that would happen at the beginning of the next fiscal year. That would then provide, likely provide a credit or debit to to Williston, you know, based on that change. The other item that I wanted to bring up touches upon Raj's. Ask about what we do for marketing, and I want to bring this back to the organizational assessment. One of the actions that we did last year was based on the organizational assessment. Was that we split up our combined planning and marketing department. So that that we would be able to do planning and marketing sort of separately and and a bit more focused. And so one of the things that I'm really happy about that is that's why you see Chris and Jamie in the director's roles. And and one of the things that I'm happy about that is is that Jamie then being able to, as our writer experience director. Really focus on, you know, how we get our message out. And and I think that we're already seeing that her increased time is beneficial for that, and we'll continue.
Go ahead, Mike. Oops, Mike, you turned your camera off and you muted yourself.
I know, I'm having a struggle this morning. Yeah, the other thing is, it's definitely a partnership, as Jamie mentioned, in terms of the municipalities also. We have found in South Burlington and the city council by adopting very sort of forward leaning TDMs. It basically helps, especially with new developments, dense developments, to be sure that when they are built. They incur, but also to their benefit of their future tenants, accessibility by public transport. I mean, physically accessible by the buses, also amenities for waiting stands, but also possibility of information. About the the transportation options that exist. You know, we're we're all creatures of habit, and we find it very important that when people move into new dense areas. That they realize that there is perhaps a public transit option that wherever they came from didn't exist. And that this is a good habit in terms of their day to day needs, especially when it comes to community. So it's definitely going to be a team team partnership, and I I really happy about Jamie having the full. Time to also come out and speak to all the different municipalities, because there's also the technical reality of demystifying to some degree how to ride a bus.
Thank you for that, and I will add that all these questions and comments are really important. And I want to remind you that we're not going to get to serve everybody because we are shrinking. And there, you know, one of the things we're trying to mitigate is that death spiral, that the more we shrink, the the fewer funds that we get and the fewer. People can use it, and we were, I think, part of all of what's driving what's happening now is that we don't have the funds to serve everybody the way that they should be served. And so that it's going to continue to be awful that that people lose service who both need and want the service. And I will also add that as board members, we can continue to try to ride the bus, talk to our friends and family and colleagues about our bus riding experiences. I've written articles for our local weekly newspaper. We can, that's a role we can certainly help to do. So I just want to remind everybody that it is bad news that we're doing this and people will lose. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, everybody. And I I continue to be appreciative of the thoughtfulness with which you are choosing these routes, trying to. Really minimize the impact, and it is not easy. And I will also add that if we had more of that administration administrative staff to go out and build those partnerships. We would, but we all know that we don't have a giant administrative staff with lots of free time. To be building those partnerships, so that makes it harder as well, in my opinion. So we're going to move on to a final review of the legislative report, and I feel like it's most definitely Clayton who's going to lead this one.
You got it, and the good news is is that we're a little behind on the agenda. But the the two topics that that I'll be covering, I think, can be compressed to get us back on schedule. What I wanted to make sure that we did was take a look at the legislative, the final legislative report. Because I think some of you may find that it has information that you would find useful. And so I'm going to share the screen and just walk through what. What is in the report in case you're looking for information? So I'm going to start off with right on the second page, we have an executive summary. And so this is something that that you all hadn't seen, hadn't been in the previous report. And it kind of just sums up the the rural transfer into one page. I think that, so if anybody is looking for, hey, you know, I'm going to go someplace and people are going to ask me about rural transfer. You know, this is what you would want to to look at to kind of get oriented. Moving on to the the table of contents. We have a forward, and this is the the why so many big buses. This is the question that I get asked the most. When I go testify next week at House Transportation, I'm sure, you know, one of the legislators will bring this up. And because I will go someplace and people will say, hey, I I see, especially in the evening, you're you're moving around these, you know, big empty buses. Why don't why don't you have a smaller fleet? You could save so much money. And that's the the reasons why the smaller fleet really, you know, wouldn't provide us the savings. For the report from Green Mountain Transit, this is the what we drafted. It talks a little bit about our response to the org assessment. It provides some very candid information about where we need to do better with our interactions with the legislature and V Trans. Give some projections about what how things are looking in fiscal year twenty seven and twenty eight financially, what the potential layoff. Situation may be with service reductions. And and so this is kind of our response to Stedman Hill. Then you have Stedman Hill's full report on the transfer, and this is the the most recent one with the updated stats. And financial figures, so the full report is listed there. For board members who are new, I think that, to me, the most valuable part of this final report, or at least the most valuable information for me as general manager. Is coming out of the organizational assessment. This is really what laid the groundwork for considering the rural transfer. Where it talked about the decrease in administrative and managerial capacity over the past decade. And where we need to, where we need to improve. Then we have the two urban service reduction memos that for the services that have already been reduced. So if anyone wants to know, hey, what did what exactly went, you know, into place in December, what's going into place in March? That's where you can find those descriptions. And then the bulk of the report is feedback from the public. And so we included all of the the comments that we got from the public about urban service reductions. And then we also have feedback that the Teamsters reached out to get. Regarding the Franklin County transfer. And so just for an update for folks. The the Teamsters have expressed neutrality when it comes to transferring the Washington County service. But they've expressed opposition to the transfer of Franklin County service. And so they had initiated reaching out to the community members to get feedback. We wanted to provide that in its entirety to the legislature, both what was communicated by the Teamsters to the community and the community response. One of the things that I will note is that a lot of the responses are from people who are talking about the importance of public transit. And aren't necessarily talking about, you know, the whether GMT should be the the provider. But I think that that's. One of the things that I think is important here, and we'll talk about this in my next segment, is just kind of seeing. The labor relations component of of the rural transfer and how that may be tricky. So I'm going to stop sharing. And so I just wanted to make sure that you all understood what's in the report. I can tell you that it's a difficult file to send to folks because it's so large, because of it's five hundred some odd pages. But I'm happy to assist if you all are trying to send it to somebody, you know, they're having difficulties because of the file size. And I wanted to see if there is any questions on the report before I jump into a legislative update.
My only question is, is it? On the Vermont legislative legislative website? Like under documents under House Transportation?
Absolutely. So if anyone goes to the House Transportation Committee's committee page, they will see reports as one of the options to select. And this report will be listed there, and so there's a link that can be downloaded. And Monica was kind enough to put that link right in the the chat. And so certainly, if you wanted to send it to folks, sending that link is is going to be the easiest way to do that.
Thank you. Questions about the final report? Okay. We will move on to the legislative update.
And so I have not been back to the State House for testimony since our last meeting. But I have been back for individual meetings and with legislators. And I expect that our testimony to House Transportation will be next week. The since our last meeting, I did have a meeting with Chair Walker, who's the chair of the House Transportation Committee. Sort of a resetting meeting, just to. You know, to kind of orient ourselves to working with each other and Representative Walker's new role. That was a very positive meeting, and I look forward to working with him and the committee. And so so our over, our annual sort of overview of GMT will be next week in House Transportation. We do not have that scheduled yet in Senate, but I imagine that that will probably happen after the the T bill crosses over into the Senate. I am happy to report that Emily Crasnow, Representative Emily Crasnow, was able to introduce with a considerable number of cosponsors, H two five five. This would add transit workers to the list of protected professions that serve the public. Where if there is an assault, there are additional penalties. And and so that would be applicable to our drivers, including our volunteer drivers and our transit center staff. And then related, I did want to let folks know. That WCAX is covering the Franklin County transfer. They have interviewed myself, Caleb Grant, the executive director for RCT. And our union steward in Franklin County. And so I expect that the story will probably air sometime this week. And it will be interesting to see if there is any response from the legislature. I I think that, as I've worried all along, that if this becomes a labor relations issue, I think that that will. Maybe divide the legislator's interest in supporting the transfer. And so I I think that the next week or two is going to be key and seeing if there is any traction at all. With with the Teamsters' resistance there. And and so that's the the legislative update that I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. No questions. There's a lot going on, but yet still quiet at the moment, so. Ah, Chapin.
Clayton, what are you seeing and hearing from your conversations as it relates to board involvement? Is there a role for us to? Have GMT be understood to be more than, you know, our lobbying representative and our general manager as we are navigating these waters?
I think that where we are going to need to see board involvement is looking past fiscal year twenty six. You know, we are in alignment with the governor's budget when it comes to that. And so that doesn't require us to do a lot of, you know, political activity to say, hey, we're in alignment with the governor's budget. But finding a funding pathway that means that we don't have a three million dollar gap in twenty seven and beyond is is an area that we're likely going to need. To have people stepping up. I can tell you it's, at at this point in time, I don't have a clear pathway for people for the direction that they should go. There has been legislation that was introduced that would. There has been legislation that was uh introduced that would uh provide an ad valorem fee to car registration so that um there would be a sliding scale based on the value of the car for an additional, you know, uh fee for registration. Um, that would certainly address the uh fiscal cliffs that we have and rural has, but I I just don't see a viable pathway forward uh for that legislation, making it through the legislative process and getting the governor's signature. And so uh, so I re- I regret that right now, I'm not really seeing a pathway um that's. You know, that I could direct you to, but certainly that's what um the Creason Group and I are focused on is is twenty seven. And you're gonna hear from them, you know, later in this uh later in this meeting.
All right. I have no idea who was first, Tasha or Mike, so you guys can figure it out.
Mike was first.
Thank you.
Yes. I can't figure. Then it doesn't matter. All right. Thank you very much, Tasha. Just very quick question, but maybe you mentioned that Clayton will be talking about twenty seven. But I I was just one of my simple question, is three million the gap for twenty seven even with all the cuts? I just wanted to be clear on that. That's.
It it it'd be between two and a half and three million, and so I've just been using three million as, you know, sort of the starting point for discussions. And uh, the person who is can answer that most definitively is Nick. And I'm not sure if he's with us today, but but that's the ballpark.
Yeah, I'm here. It's it is, I mean, but we also don't have a union contract for our largest bargaining agreement done, so. You know, I think that adds a lot of uncertainty right now to to the numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tasha.
Thanks, and I guess my question is about uncertainty. We're talking about gaps and the the path forward. Uh, something I really don't understand and I haven't seen coverage of yet. Um, do we have any sense or is uh federal funding for a public transit possibly gonna be under fire in the future? And and maybe Ross, you could share with us if there's any signals or how you will let us know if there's signals or dire outcomes or whatever.
Sure, and um for urban and Vtrans, we have the same region, one office in Boston that we work through. And you can imagine with our providers, um you included, we're just trying to wait and see what. Guidance is gonna be coming down from the FTA office. And on that, that is truly the federal side of things. So far, um, we have hustled to get some carbon reduction program funds into the FTA budget and programmed and obligated for obvious reasons. Um, those, you know, could be at risk, but we don't know that. And until we know something, we're not trying to um uh anticipate uh the those specifics on on the program. That's a- and Region One hasn't given us much more than, you know, a a general assurance that they don't have any more information for us at this time. I don't know if Clayton has any other information he's received from the office.
Um, one of the things that may be coming to the board in March um is that uh we are about to put in another electric uh bus order. Um, and when we've talked with FTA um and asked them if they can provide assurances that the funding uh for these electric buses will be available to us at the time that they're delivered. They were not able to provide us that the assurances that the funds would be available. So one of the things that we may have to decide in the next month is, are we comfortable with spending, you know, I thi- I think it's about eight million dollars um that uh, you know, a year from now, we may have a bill for with no federal funds attached. And so that that to me is gonna be the uh, the item that we're most uh quickly gonna have to figure out. Um, as far as what happens to the fifty three oh seven, fifty three eleven programs, I I think it's uh anyone's guess at this point. Um, you know, so it it uh and not to be, you know, too doom and gloom, but I think that we just have to be. Um, open to the fact that we may be getting considerably less federal funds in the future for transit, and that's really gonna force us to um, you know, rethink all of our activities.
In the essence of, go ahead.
Well, this is the big question right now, is the fifty three thirty nine regular bus and bus facility um competitive grant program. We haven't seen the notice of funding opportunity or the NOFO on that yet. And in years past, we have seen it by now. Um, and that's uh the mechanism, the funding revenues that we were expecting to apply for to really help with our state of good repair goals of having no more than twenty percent of our total fleet in um poor condition. And we're in the high twenties right now. So we were gonna be asking for millions of dollars to uh help with that um aspect of the transit program. We're hopeful, we're not being told that it's not forthcoming, it just hasn't been here yet. And when we look at federal dollars, we've got federal dollars that have been, you know, programmed and awarded, programs that have been obligated through those awards, and then those spent through. And we are hopeful, and ASHTO, the Association for All of Us, uh State Management Programs and Transit, are um imploring us to maintain our obligations. And if we do have electric buses on order that are part of an agreement, pulling that at this time may be premature, especially since they are obligated. We do have loan-o funds that we've received the awards for but aren't attached with a purchase order yet or a procurement process. Those funds would be under more risk than those that are already under contract, of course. But we don't know how far this um administration's gonna go in uh in repealing some of these um uh a- awards and um projects they were designed to uh to to be part of.
And I'm gonna move this along, but I do wanna say that um if you live and work uh live or work in Franklin Grand Isle, there's a Legislative Breakfast Monday morning um at eight um AM at the Swanton Municipal Building. Um, so continuing to have those conversations and build relationships with your legislators is super important because they will come to you for that information, then it makes it easier to get information to them more quickly. Um, so thank you for that com- that question, Chapin, and for. I do wanna acknowledge all the unknowns um that we're facing um at the moment. And I also want to move on. Um, we're a little bit behind. Um, so Matt, we're we're gonna do the capital projects update um on pages nineteen to twenty one of our packet, but I'm gonna ask you to be as speedy as possible.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll keep it a a high level overview here, so um. Just to start, uh, we completed the uh electric vehicle, it's uh charging equipment uh infrastructure project um in the fall of twenty twenty four. This was the installation of uh new new uh new electric service to the south side of our one-on-one Queen City Park uh bus garage, which includes uh two uh large transformer vaults, one which is now housing a fifteen hundred KVA transformer. Uh, the other one will be for future ex- expansion. Uh, we have our uh switchboard as well as a housekeeping pad for future switchboard. The primary goal here was to meet the existing charging needs as well as to set us up for future uh rollout there. Uh, so we we have uh at this time, two hundred and eighty kilowatt chargers uh which are feeding a total of six dispensers. Uh, these were substantially complete uh in October twenty twenty four. We went through the commissioning process with Heliox and ChargePilot. Uh, that was all completed in November. And uh where we were able to uh you fully utilize those chargers for op- for operating certain, for operating the electric buses. Uh, largely, the the this has been reliable, but we have had a few hit cups um along the way. I I did know in the memo, we did incur a demand charge in our December bill, which amounted to about forty six hundred dollars and an increase in utility costs. We have communicated that to New Flyer uh with a request that New Flyer reimburse us uh for that cost. It's being uh routed throughout their leadership, but thus far, uh they haven't really challenged us on that amount or our request. So more to come on that, but we're hopeful that uh will be reimbursed and uh that we'll have. Measures in place to avoid those uh inadvertent demand charges in the future. Uh, our next big project project in the pipeline is im- im- uh improvement to our uh fire suppression system at one-on-one Queen City Park in our bus storage area. This is to comply with uh requirements from the Fire Marshal uh in order for us to be uh able to do any indoor charging activities in the in the bus barn. So we're starting with uh an overhaul of the sprinkler system. We have an award to FireTech for a hundred and thirty seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to completely uh revamp the sprinkler system in our bus garage. Uh, increase the main coming from the sprinkler room uh in the facility out to the garage. And um, so that's uh, that work will be taking place in March with a projected finish of April thirtieth. And then another project that will be happening in conjunction with this that is also addressing uh requirements from the Fire Marshal is uh a fire alarm integration uh for our ventilation systems in the bus storage garage. So we have a uh several, we have a couple of uh large makeup air units, uh three mo- large makeup air units inside the bus garage and the paint booth. Uh, this would be having a tie-in uh to the fire alarm system so that when uh fires, fire alarm is triggered, those systems shut down as that would uh shut off oxygen flow into the area to hopefully not feed uh any active fire events. So that uh design is near completion there. There, the proposal is to have a building management system that would be uh managing that integration uh with those those systems. Uh, look, a recap uh on uh bus stop amenity projects uh in uh this fiscal year. So we had an AARP Community Challenge Grant uh that was used to purchase twelve semi-seat benches. Uh, which uh we installed uh four of at this time, or installed benches at four bus stops uh at this time. Uh, two in Burlington, one in Winewski, and one in South Burlington. Uh, and then we also installed a fifth semi-seat uh at the North Ave and Shore Road Bus Stop. Uh, and so we're we're excited to to uh put this new uh product into the system. Uh, and so far, it's it's looked like a great fit, and uh we're currently looking at other locations uh to be able to to do those installations. Uh, we also installed a post and beam bus shelter at Champlain Place on Shelburne Road in Burlington. We we worked with uh their their developers to have a shelter pad uh installed that we could uh install the shelter. Uh, so uh, and that has been a uh busy ridership uh shelter over the past few years. Our bu- busy ridership stop over the past few years, so we're excited to see a shelter go up there. And then uh to close out, uh just looking ahead, we we touched on the bus and bus facilities uh application uh that we're still waiting on the NOFO. Uh, we have a slate of facility projects for one-on-one Queen City Park uh to address some uh deferred rate maintenance needs. Uh, the primary gun being our uh replacement of our shop and garage makeup air units, which are all original to the facility in the mid nineties. Uh, as well as uh about half of our HVAC rooftop units in the admin area. Uh, tho- about half of those are original to the facility as well, so to get those all caught up uh to new technology. Integrating uh network climate control, uh which hopefully we can utilize that uh uh building management system from the fire alarm integration project. Uh, expand upon that and utilize that for some of this uh integration work. Uh, replacement of our bus wash system. Uh, improvements uh to the outdoor walkway between what is the new driver's lounge area uh and uh the new and new driver entry uh in the front door next to the wash bay exit. Uh, so that would be uh covered walkway area and some um ice melt uh equipment uh for the slab right in front of the the wash bay. Uh, we currently have a mirror uh in that area. Uh, we may do other improvements for uh pedestrian uh access through that corridor. And then finally, installation of rapid rise doors in the bus storage garage. Um, so right now, we're targeting uh March for the completion of design materials and cost estimating. Um. Uh, for this for this slate of projects, so that we can pull together an application uh by the projected deadline of late uh April. And part of that is that we are uh looking at developing procurement materials for uh hiring a consultant to help us with uh preparation of the grant. And then uh before I move along to questions, I I did, I I intended to include in this memo um just giving due credit to our project manager Connor Smith, who's doing a lot of the uh on-the-ground work here. So I would be remiss if I didn't give Connor credit since he is doing the bulk of the work that I'm uh outlining in this memo. So um, thanks for all your hard work, Connor, and um hope that uh anybody on this call relays that to him if you see him in person.
That's awesome, Matt. Thank you. Go ahead, Paul.
Now, Matt, is that demand charge a one-time or is that recurring?
So we expect that's gonna be a one-time. Uh, the way that the ratchet works with uh Burlington Electric is that it's the highest on-peak demand charge during the summer months that uh triggers the ratchet. So in the wintertime, it should just be a one-time. Uh, what we're not sure of is if uh we are gonna see another demand charge in the January bill uh because we haven't gotten that one yet. Um, but I have communicated to New Flyer that we um haven't gotten that bill yet. Uh, but if we do see a demand charge, that we would be writing that uh to them as well. And I also did talk to them about the ratchet. So they are hopefully now fully understanding uh the uh implications of uh having these demand charges, and they may be able to put more pressure on their uh subs to get some uh measures in place for us to be able to see when these chargers have interruptions that cause that.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay. Thank you, Matt. You got us back on schedule, just about. Perfect. Um, so Ross, I think I'm gonna turn it over to you for our root performance report, or maybe Clayton, that was you to kick off?
Oh, I think it's over to Ross unless he wants Dan to present.
Nope, he looks like he's ready.
There I go. Dan's been on a on a cruise for the last week with his family. If I couldn't do that to him first thing on his first day back. Um, but um hopefully you can see this, um and we do this with all of our providers. The Root Performance Report is um one of the more important documents we uh produce every year just to try to get a apples-to-apples comparison around the services being presented and provided throughout the state. Um, but it presents the results uh of all transit services across Vermont. Um, and it does show um a in-town service in southwest Vermont, how's that compared to northeast Vermont? And we do try to use that to ensure some geographic equity in terms of our awards as well as um outlining really successful routes to see why and what can be replicated, and those unsuccessful routes to see if those need to be adjusted. Do they need to take on a different classification, fewer hours, or an outright uh elimination? Those types of things happen every year. Um, and uh as we can see, uh ridership was up nine percent, still getting uh to that pre-COVID level. We're almost there, but the commuter services have certainly uh tamped that down. Um, and unfortunately, the cost increased by thirteen percent. And so as a result, the average cost of a ride is uh now fourteen fifty-five. Pre-COVID, it was about eight or nine dollars. And so um as we talk about, you know, GMT's era of expansion and twenty years, and these last few years have been the era of contraction. We also look at that in the rural side, and even though the budget um has gone from thirty-six million dollars my first year as manager uh to fifty-three million dollars, we still are in this era era of service contraction, even with those increased dollars. So bit ironic and and wanted to set the stage uh with that with those comments. Uh, but these are, I have uh about ten minutes of slides to talk about the services, and then just a few slides on the budget now that it's official and it's been um uh established. I've spoken with Nick and uh uh and Clayton just wanna share a little bit of that with the board. Um, so there's the ridership again, right around um pre-COVID levels. If our commuter services were back to where they used to be, uh we would be at that five million level, um but that isn't the new normal. Statewide operating costs, this is, this does include the operating costs associated with the non-emergency medical transportation or the the Medicaid uh services. Um, you can see a significant increase to operate our services. Um, and the per trip uh cost again, uh seven, nine dollars. When what when it reached over ten dollars um in twenty twenty, we thought, well, let's bend that cost curve down a little bit. When what when it reached over ten dollars um in twenty twenty, we thought, well, let's bend that cost curve down a little bit. And we've seen just the opposite. Uh but this is, this is what we have with our current service levels. There have been changes since twenty twenty-four and GMT's made a big percentage of those changes we'll talk about. I just want to compare the cost versus the the ridership. Urban, forty-seven percent of the ridership for the entire state is you 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 folks in the urban area. And it takes up twenty percent of the type total budget, far making up the most efficient investment um for our. Uh for our riders in Vermont, but most folks um you know, don't live in Chitting County. Fifty percent do, fifty percent of the ridership. We're trying to keep that geographic equity to an extent. Um demand response, eleven percent of the ridership, meaning thirty-nine percent of the costs. That's where the money is. Um that and microtransit and commuter, those are the ones that have uh higher costs. Far a higher cost than percentage of uh ridership. And so when we look at. You know, where the reductions could could be made, could they be, you know, finding a more efficient demand response service? Uh uh decreasing commuter uh services, looking at microtransit, we just talked about it at Montpelier. Bang for the buck and reducing uh the impacts to the extent possible. Cost per trip service category. So we'll go through these slides and show like tourism and microtransit routes, the commuter routes. But the demand response was about twenty-four dollars pre-COVID. It's doubled. And that is why we're asking our providers to do what they can to re-establish uh community drivers, volunteer drivers, lower-cost options. Um uh pilots, you know, uh to see if there are better ways to meet those demands. Microtransit, we were hoping that would really, we knew it wouldn't be cheaper. We're hoping it would double or triple ridership. That really hasn't happened. Um and we're starting to to see what what that looks like um throughout the state. Um and you can just take a look at the rest. Uh but the urban, six fifteen and tourism. Our van pool program, twenty-two van pools throughout the state, we can put about ten van pools on the road for the cost of one route. Um and so that is an option like we talked to your Jeffersonville folks. If they were interested, we could put them in a van pool and reduce that seventy-dollar per trip uh uh cost sixty-three dollars uh to around seven, seven, seven or eight. So let's go through these, um which is just their uh different categories and classifications. Um urban cost. Really consistent. The Williston Essex, you've been thinking and 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 talking and planning around that one for um a few years now. Small town cost per passenger, good example, advanced transit, they reduced this uh uh brown route. And pushed it into these other routes already. And so they've already dealt with a underperforming route. And you can see GMT rural over here pretty consistent, along with the average, St. Albans downtown and city commuter a little bit above uh average. Uh we have a lot of small towns, and so we have page two. Springfield in-town, uh SCBT is trying to generate enough dollars. Um local dollars to move this service to a microtransit service. That's concerning to us because it could cost more. But it could be more meaningful. And if it's local support and they want to run toward a better demand response service in their area. We're happy to uh to see what that looks like. Um the Brattleboro Blue Line is part of the red, white and blue. When you all take these into consideration, uh Brattleboro is in the acceptable uh threshold. Unfortunately, though, we are or we are asking SCBT to to bring this back into uh the success, uh the acceptable. Uh category. Now we look at uh demand response. And GMT rural, um you know, I don't think I, I think we've talked about this with the rural assessment. It's the highest um in in the state other than advanced transit doing a few ADA services. They don't have uh the other demand response services, NEMT. O and D recovery and job access. Uh we are concerned again with, these are the dots are the percentage of volunteers, VABVI. Vermont Association of Blind and Visually Impaired, they have volunteer drivers that um only, they don't use the fleet. Uh and we can see TBT with sixty-five percent of their uh trips being done with volunteers, but still a pretty high cost. And so we need to work with TBT on on those things. GMT urban. You use SSTI for most of your demand response. Uh they do not use volunteers. Um and it's tough to get volunteers to run two or three miles for a mileage reimbursement. So we do see fewer volunteers in areas that are small, compact regions uh like a GMCN in the Bennington area. Most of their trips are right to the hospital or down the street. But um compared to uh per-trip costs, you know, they're they're lower than than the rest. So this is the make makeup of demand response costs, as you saw, over fifty dollars per person. We really need to figure out if uh we're gonna be able to uh reduce those costs or find some efficiencies. Microtransit, there's only four. We have six pilots now um uh from uh this time. And they're all pretty consistent in terms of cost, which is important to know. But we also, because this is a new mode, we wanted to take a look at some key performance indices or indicators. And we can see that, you know, we now have Middlebury, we have a Brattleboro evening service um from five to eleven. We didn't know if evenings and weekends would be. Uh a a better use in mic for microtransit in our more dense areas. We wanted to take a look at this to see what it would do to inform GMT urban. Um and it's pricey. Um and that's where we are. We look at Montpelier. And it's far more trips than the others. Um it's a little more expensive. Once we look at the allocated cost starting in in August, these are as of October is the last time I asked for this data. And then the real difference is, you know, when folks ask for a trip, what's the percentage that immediately gets that response of saying, yep? We're all set, you're booked, we're on our way. And that was what Chris was showing you. At the end of the day, they are able to provide options that people use. But fifty percent of the time is generally not their first option. I think I have that right, but looking at Chris's information and the information that I've received. If that's something, if I'm off, please let me know, Chris. Uh but this is why we're saying, hey, this is expensive. We replaced existing fixed routes. We have determined that microtransit really isn't a better fit for successful fixed routes um that uh are performing pretty well. And so we just thought, hey, uh when we're looking at uh being upside down on our budget, looking at our first pilot in Montpelier. Losing the twenty percent uh match as those funds are expended through um our T-bill um allotment. Uh that this would be an opportunity maybe to revert back and very much uh appreciative of the efforts that uh you're now embarking on with the community. To see what that would look like. A uh a an option in Montpelier that is more expensive will be something we probably wouldn't support at the agency level, even though we could do. A lot more with a lot more funds. We don't have those dollars. And so how do how do we uh bridge that gap? Uh we might be going backwards for microtransit in a few areas in these coming years. So once again, GMT's kind of on the hook to show the way and guide us. Back to tourism, uh the Crown Connection, that's being canceled. That was uh uh for the Kingdom Express uh or Kingdom Trails. Just didn't have a lot of folks using their bike rack and bus there. We'll talk about GMT Valley Floor. Um we know some folks who use, who work here now, used to work here. Um who used to be part of the seasonal service. And based on our information. Um it, the ridership seems to be in the morning and evening to kind of uh clear the way to and from the resort. Didn't know if this would be something that would move to more of a of a commuter morning and evening type service uh to get more ridership. Reduce the cost and bring this down. It's just something that we'll talk with Chris about. Important to note, spoken with Chris and Clayton, Nick, and uh Chris has invited Dan Courier and Steve Fabel to review. These root considerations. Uh for a few reasons. One, Steve knows the small transit intensive cities stick factors like very few people in the country. And um he can help Chris assess, how low can you go and what adjustments can you make before you. Effect those six hundred thousand or more uh dollars uh for those thresholds. And we're gonna get to the the plane of action moving forward for twenty-seven already in just um a few slides here. But I did want to uh bring up this valley floor to the group. And um on the commuter cost, we have a couple commuter costs. We have a lot of commuter services that just don't have the ridership they used to. You've already made the cuts on the link services, which has been uh helpful. I'm very um anxious to learn of the results. Of those three morning and afternoon and one trip in the in midday. Um you know. Could that go to two trips? Um same with some of these other providers. We know that you've already uh uh removed the Jefferson, Jeffersonville commuter. We'll talk with RCT about uh US two and see if there needs to be changes there. Commuter cost per passenger, TBT with the eighty-niner, that for connector, that has gone away um already, as you can imagine. And we'll continue to work uh with uh with our other friends, Westover. This is also being canceled. Um this is an evening service for the resorts. Um and um it's just something that uh hasn't had ridership since COVID. And then the inner city, these are the lowest numbers uh that we've seen. Uh before, they were around the forty, fifty dollars per trip, per uh subsidy. But um we do have strong ridership along the Route Seven and uh the Springfield, Mass uh to um uh Montreal corridor. And um so those are are in in good shape, but they are expensive. And if we did need to make further cuts. Uh obviously, you gotta look at where the money's being spent. And so uh uh but that's where we are with inner city. So. That is the Root Performance Report in twelve minutes, and that gives me three minutes to talk a little bit about the budget. And that is, it's out. And so it's official. We have fifty-three million plus dollars in our budget. Um it does incorporate three million dollars in carbon reduction program funds for operations. CRP funds, if you'll allow the uh acronym, um can be used for operations at an eighty federal, twenty percent non-fed level. Now making those investments and taking on some CMAC routes, congestion mitigation, air quality, also eighty, twenty dollars. To obligate and to stretch out those services over the next few years while we look at those underperforming routes, bending that cost curve down. May uh allow us breathing room to meet our uh uh sustaining our services in twenty-six. And maybe in twenty-seven, but way too early to talk about that. For that three million, we gave up a million dollars in congestion mitigation funds. Those funds are used and split between rail and transit with all thirteen million dollars. Um and. We're having Peter pay Paul here a little bit um. Uh sustaining uh and if we're able to do that. Um and and apply those dollars uh from the carbon reduction program, we feel we can sustain all rural services. Um and we also took a a bit of a haircut in our our FHWA. So we sustain services in twenty-six. We work with um our providers to adjust underperforming services. We use some of these three million dollars in carbon reduction program funds to further support. GMT urban, whether more carbon reduction uh CMAC dollars or more or initial carbon reduction program funds. We'll work with Nick and Chris and see what we need and what flavor of funds to sustain as many services as possible. To maintain the that level of service cut that you were discussing earlier, five hundred thousand, a lot better than one point two million dollars. And as Commissioner Brewer says, uh we know uh the worst thing to do is cut hours and services. Um but hoping that what we do at the end is to adjust the services of rural. Partially cover those urban. And then with the providers telling me how they're saving money and finding efficiencies, our efforts with uh. Volunteers, of which we hope uh GMT will be able to participate in our MTI funds. Those funds are on hold, long story. Um that we can demonstrate to the budget committee that GMT's made these service cuts. We've made these cuts on the rural and the new post-COVID, post-inflation number is fifty-five million. It's not fifty-three, it's not fifty. Two, it's a number that we can uh confidently go to the legislature with and our budget committee to try to uh. Meet your demands in twenty-seven. I don't know if we can get all the way there, but that is the goal. And we've got a lot of work to do with these thirteen underperforming routes. And the last slide, just confirming GMT urban. Uh this is when you had US two commuter and so and Lemoil and everything else is still. About the same amount of the thirty-three million dollar budget. As you were when we had a twenty-two million dollar budget for these core activities, which is ops, admin, preventive maintenance and the O and D program. And so it's important to just note that we have tried to stay consistent um. Pre and during COVID, whoops, on state funds, urban of our state funds. Um you know, from thirty-five to thirty-two, fifty-nine, eighty-four percent. Um those. Those uh state dollars that we receive, um I did want to confirm that, you know, it is a a big portion of those dollars. Continue and will continue going to the urban services. Um and uh that's where we are. That's why we worked with GMT urban. First to try to bend that cost curve down a little bit on your side of things so that when we make these awards in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we maintain those. Percentages to an extent until we ask for that big budget increase for twenty-seven. And that is the presentation.
There's a whole lot of information, Ross. Thank you. And I'm sorry that we had to squish it into just a hot second. Um. And um we don't have a lot of time for questions. I want to hear from the Grayson Group, but if there's a a burning question that someone wants to add, that can be quick. That would be great. Catherine?
I'll make it super quick. So the Rural Transfer Study Report recommended that the Albergen Ridge for commuter be shipped to to CMAC funds if GMT were to retain management. But I see your presentation reduces CMAC. Do you see that still possible?
It's actually CMAC and carbon reduction program funds act similarly. And so as we give up the one million dollars in carbon reduction program. Uh uh in CMAC, we pick up three million in carbon reduction program. So it's a net two million dollar increase for those services. We'll see what those applications look like in March, April um to see what uh we'll need to uh cover. For for Franklin area as well as the rest of the state.
Okay, Mike?
Good question. Um thank you very much for a very comprehensive briefing. Is that a public document? Is that something that can be shared with us or we can find it on some link?
Absolutely. Root Performance Report is uh published on the VTран's website. I will share these slides with Clayton when I get out of here, so you can take a look. Um and the full report um is, uh we have them from two thousand and four uh through this year. Um so it's always interesting to kind of go back and see where we were um and and where we're headed.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And I know this is really hard to do, so I'm just gonna make a comment and know that it's nearly impossible, but. We're talking about changes within the transit system, uh but not able to highlight the positive impact of increasing transit. Um on parking, on infrastructure and on our our carbon emissions and our environment. So I. Just because we reduce costs doesn't mean that we reducing, you know, that we're helping the impact to our our communities and our environment. So as much as possible, if we could talk about that when we're talking about this to make it. Uh make that connection. That would be amazing. And I know it's hard to quantify. Um so thank you. Thank you to all. Um I'm gonna scoot us along to um introduction to the Nick Grayson Group.
Um thank you so much, uh Amy. And uh you know, I'm gonna make an analogy. The State House, it's kind of like a jungle. And I'm really happy that we have a guide uh to help us navigate all of the complicated pathways. And uh and so this uh this uh session, uh we decided to to bring on the Grayson Group, um or the Grayson Group. And uh I can tell you, I've been super happy with the help that they're providing. Um our lead is here with us, uh Tao. And uh I'm gonna turn it over to him. Uh but he's already been extremely helpful in helping us. You know, work better uh with the legislature and VTранs. And so uh Tao. Um I'll turn it over to you to give an introduction to uh to your team.
All right. Thank you, Clayton. Good morning, everyone. Uh my name is Tao Jagar. I uh am an associate lobbyist with Nick Grayson Group. My fourth or fifth year here uh in another lifetime. In another lifetime, I was a legislator, twenty-eleven and twenty-sixteen. I live in Barnard, so Windsor County Legislature. Started working for the Grayson right at the tail end of the pandemic. And it's been a pleasure working with Clayton and getting to know the public transportation landscape. For those who, who don't, weren't familiar with us, the Grayson Group, we're sort of an all-purpose government affairs lobby and consulting communications firm with an extensive roster of clients. We work with STEES, downtown alliance, preservation trust, housing conservation coalition, credit unions, labor unions, some national business clients and a host of others. My role is to be GMT's eyes and ears in the building and working with Clayton, figuring out how and when to engage in the State House, arranging, facilitating meetings with lawmakers and legislative leaders. We had a meeting with the Speaker last week or the week before, helping draft memos and testimony. So I'm, I'm the point person here, but I, I rely on my team, Adam McRas, Rebecca Ramos, Jessica Hasky, who, between the three of them combined, have the close to a hundred years of experience in the State House. So very knowledgeable team. They've helped guide some of the, you know, most significant legislative actions recent years. We see, we see this, this, this work with GMT is sort of helping guide through a period of transition in, in a number of ways, returning to post-pandemic economics. There's been sort of a massive shift in legislative power dynamics in the State House, a lot of uncertainty at the federal level. Not to mention the potential transfer of, of rural service and maybe some governance restructuring. So we're just working on communicating with legislators, and there's a lot of new legislators about status of, of service changes and kind of helping narrate GMT's adaptation to the changing landscape, keeping the needs of riders and those who depend on GMT's services top of mind. One advantage that GMT has is, is a lot of legislators have constituents who ride GMT's buses. And they hear from them. And, you know, we, we have a number of allies in the building. So, you know, we are obviously working through the FY twenty-six budgetary needs and constraints, setting the stage for FY twenty-seven. And continuing to remind legislators of, of repeat recommendations for trying to find some sustainable funding mechanism for public transit. There, there will be at least one bill coming out of the Senate, Senator Chittenden, to, to address that. Lastly, there's a new bill, H two fifty-five, introduced by Representative Emily Crasnow. It would add public transit workers to the list of, of workers who, if subject to assault, triggers additional penalties. So that's my intro. And like I said, it's been a pleasure working with Clayton. It's always nice working with clients who bring some political savvy and a lot of know-how to the job. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, I can add now that one of the things that is also included in our service is that essentially the Grayson Group is my team of therapists that keep me hopeful, you know, about the future. And that I very much appreciate.
Well, bonus then. Questions? All right. It is so wonderful to meet you. I'm so glad that you are eyes and ears and talking points and relationship building for us in the State House. And please let us know, I think Chapin asked earlier, but if there's ways that any of our commissioners can engage in a positive way, please don't hesitate to reach out. There's a lot of willingness to among commissioners to participate.
Okay, good to know. We'll do.
All right. Thank you. And our last four or so minutes, we have committee reports. And I will share that leadership talked about all the things that we've already talked about. I don't think there's anything missing. And workforce didn't meet. And that leaves, let's go with governance, Catherine.
We also, we would have a normally scheduled meeting next week, but with it being school vacation week, we will be not, we will not be meeting.
Okay. And strategy?
Oh, strategy is no longer.
Great. I don't know why I said that. That's performance is what I meant to say. Forgive me.
We have not met, but I believe we're meeting the, is it the last week? I've lost track.
Next week, yes.
Next week, yes.
All right. And Paul, finance?
We did meet. We went over the most recent budget figures, no real surprises there. Maybe some slight, slight deficits, but nothing that's concerning in the long run for this fiscal year. We also talked about the rule that would do some true-ups when people lose service. So that's something that'll get back to the board at some point in time.
Great. And I will say that there are a couple alternates that we're still trying to find homes for and believe that probably workforce will be on pause a little bit during tax season. So Bob can get his feet under him. And then we'll kind of look at our list and make sure that we have the right people on the right committees and that those committees have enough people to meet and, and hit quorum. So I encourage you, if you're assigned to a committee, do your best to join so that those committees can meet and do the work. And that is it for committee reports. Are there any commissioner comments? All right, quiet group. Look at this. One minute ahead of time. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks, Mike. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Raj. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Awesome. It's lovely seeing all of you. I hope you all stay warm and enjoy the little bit of sunshine, sunshine we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Amy.
Bye.